My pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the May 2nd meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Shelley Buehler and I have the pleasure of serving as Chair of the Commission alongside my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner Bob Archer.
Good morning.
Commissioner Kevin Cook.
Good morning.
Madam Clerk, the first item, please.
Item three, consent agenda.
Are there questions on the consent agenda?
I would move for approval of the consent agenda, but do note that the Washburn University School of Law will be using the courthouse for its trial advocacy program. This is a great program put on by the university to help people that are in law school and learn some of the skills and training, and so always good that we can open up our facility to help do that.
Exactly. Thank you for noting that. Is there a second?
I agree in second.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item four, new business. A county clerk, number one, consider all voucher payments.
Madam Chair, this morning we have one voucher report dated April 29th, 2016. Total amount of vouchers is $1,523,173.2. Significant items in the vouchers include capers to the amount of $307,000, the bridge project, $176,000, health insurance, $157,000, and contribution to JADO of $605,000. I've reviewed the vouchers. I have no additional questions and would make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Number two, consider correction orders.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item B, planning. Number one, consider approval of resolution number 2016-34, amending the district zoning classification for United Methodist Homes for the aged Inc. from residential reserve district to planned unit development district on property located on the south side of Southwest 29th Street between Southwest Asbury Drive and Southwest Canock Chase Road in Mission Township to accommodate development of a cohesive medical and office park.
Morning, Commissioners. Barry Beagles, Shawnee County Planning Department. What I'm going to do is give you a quick run-through, hope you don't mind with Darpoint, the nature of both issues that we have before you this morning, or I have enough detail that I thought you would be warranted to provide some visual information.
Let's go ahead. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. So, just for everyone in the audience who will listen to, Barry, Commissioners will have questions and then we'll open it up for comment.
Well, it's working well so far. Well, anyway, the first item that we have on the agenda is a request by United Methodist Homes and Stormont Vale Healthcare seeking to reclassify a 32.59 acre parcel located on the south side of 29th Street between Asbury and Canock Chase Road. And eventually, I will get there. They are seeking reclassification from RR1 Residential Reserve District to the PUD Planned Unit Development District. The subject property forms the northern boundary of 168 acres Aldersgate Village Retirement Community, which generally extends east of Indian Hills Road between 29th and 33rd Street. Based on the current plan of record, the subject property located along the south side of 29th Street again is reserved for open space. It is the applicant's intention in seeking reclassification to market the subject property for development separate from the retirement community. Using the Planned Unit Development District, the applicant proposes to develop a cohesive medical and office park that enhances not only the retirement village, but also the adjoining residential neighborhood immediately to the north. This request appeared before the Planning Commission for Public Hearing on April 11th and was unanimously recommended for approval by a vote of six to zero. There was one person who appeared to ask questions about it, but no one appeared in opposition to the proposal. The following factors were identified by the Planning Commission in support of the proposed reclassification. In many respects, Aldersgate Village is an urban enclave. In other words, it's bounded by urban residential development to the north, east, and south, based on the established pattern of development and availability of public services. Independent of its association from Aldersgate Village, it is no longer considered suitable, restricted solely for agricultural and rural residential uses as presently restricted. Based on the predominant character of this area, the expected development of the property would naturally be first for single-family residential land use. At the same time, the Planning Commission, in considering its existing classification and development, believe that the depth of the property and its configuration, along with access restricted to 29th Street, would present limitations associated with its development exclusively for single-family development. So, turning to the proposal itself, the proposed reclassification would result in the extension of office development approximately 1,760 feet west from where it terminates currently along the south side of 29th Street. In this case, the applicant is proposing a planned medical and office park consisting, containing use and development restrictions. The master PUD plan submitted is what is called a program PUD, in that it does not lay out a specific development concept for the property, but lays out program objectives and performance measures which would have to be met with the development of the property. As such, the master plan establishes standards governing utility placement, parking and circulation, signage, exterior lighting, landscaping, open space, building design, along with use and development restrictions. These standards will have to be met through submission of site development plans prior to securing building permits to commence construction. If found to conform to the requirements of the master plan, the site development plan will be approved administratively by the Planning Director. So, turning to the master PUD plan itself, I provided this slide to the Planning Commission and shared with you as well to graphically illustrate the type of, well, the density, if you will, of the project development. The master PUD plan of Aldersgate Village Medical and Office Park consists of three lots, each to be developed under a common set of guidelines as previously referenced. Lot one, which is right there, excuse me, I can't control the mouse. Lot one comprises seven acres and has a building density restriction of 25,000 square feet, maximum building area per structure, with a maximum building height of 35 feet. At least 20% of the lot must be reserved for common open space, which equates to 60,984 square feet, or 1.4 acres. Lot two, which is immediately south and accessible through Asbury Drive, comprises 15.37 acres and subject to a floor area ratio of .18 that will limit the gross floor area of all structures to 120,513 square feet. In addition, no individual structure can exceed that of 25,000 square feet and a height of 35 feet. It also is subject to a 20% set aside for common open space, which equates to 133,903 square feet, which is equivalent to 3.1 acres of the site and must be reserved as common open space. And finally, along the south side of Southwest 29th Street is Lot Three, which comprises 10.22 acres and also subject to a floor area ratio of .18 that would permit a gross floor area of 80,133 square feet. It limits the size of multi-tenant structures to 25,000 square feet and single-tenant structures to 5,000 square feet. It as well establishes a 20% set aside for common open space, which is equivalent to 89,37 square feet, or two acres of the lot would have to be set aside for open space. To create an attractive office park and maximize compatibility with the adjoining residential neighborhood to the north, the following performance measures were specifically noted by the Planning Commission in support. First is use group restrictions. To enable development of a professional office park while maximizing compatibility with the adjoining residential neighborhood to the north, the development shall be restricted to 24 uses. Well, will be restricted to the following uses. Lots one and three will be restricted to the ONI II district, so primarily it will allow for professional offices, cultural facilities such as a museum, could allow for elementary schools, secondary schools, public parks, vocational schools, and medical care facilities like a nursing home, as well as for retail sales and food sales, which are incidental and subordinate to the primary use of the property. Lot two would be restricted to the ONI II district, and in addition to the uses listed previously, you would also allow for a reception conference and assembly facility, community center, hospital, portrait and art studios, and research laboratory. Specifically excluded from this list are 24 uses, which the applicant considered were not consistent with the character of development that they were proposing, and also to maximize compatibility with the adjoining residential neighborhood to the north. So, they utilized the PUD district to set the tone for the character of the development, which is for you. Except for Lot One, the master PUD plan establishes, again, a floor area ratio of .18, which means the gross floor area of all structures on the lot cannot exceed 18% of lot area. Only Lot Three shares most frontage on 29th Street with the adjoining residential neighborhood to the north. However, the floor area ratio limitation, along with the 20% minimum open space requirement, along with landscaping requirements and other performance measures, were anticipated by the Planning Commission to not result in any conflict with the adjoining residential neighborhood to the north. So, there were also other restrictions that I could cover with regard to lighting and signage and building design. In the end, at issue before the Planning Commission was the question of whether the performance measures incorporated into the PUD plan achieved the stated objective to create a cohesive medical and office park that enhances surrounding residential properties. The Planning Commission believed the combination of performance measures and use and development restrictions would result in the development of a distinctive office park that would be compatible with that of the adjoining residential neighborhood. So, with that, I will conclude my comments.
Thank you, Barry. Other questions for Mr. Beagle at this time? Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have one question, Barry. In March, the Commission entered into a contract with RDG Planning and Design.
Yes, sir.
To develop a comprehensive plan for unincorporated Shawnee County. What is their opinion of this PUD?
This specific development project has not been shared with RDG.
Would it make sense to get their opinion to make sure we're all on the same page in moving forward?
Well, we anticipate the RDG contract will last a year. At this point in time, we are in the fact gathering stage. We're trying to establish a baseline analysis of existing conditions within Shawnee County. And so, we were not utilizing them as a consultant with respect to this particular development project, realizing that we're just getting underway with that comprehensive planning project.
But this is of significant wealth. Shouldn't we discuss this with RDG?
Well, we have had decades of consideration, I guess you could say, without the, you know, the advantage of a comprehensive plan. In this particular case, it is the reasoned opinion of both staff, as well as the Planning Commission, that the intended development here would be consistent with the area in which it's located, without detrimental effect. We're not introducing a completely new development concept within Shawnee County. We're not introducing something that is wholly out of character with that of the surrounding neighborhood. And so, that's why both the Planning Commission and staff are willing to support this request.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Ms. Clerk?
You indicated that these three lots were reserved for open space when it was initially developed.
Yes.
And this area, the Aldersgate Village, was a fairly significant development when it commenced. And the area has kind of grown up around it as residential development. Why are we switching from a open space area now to something else?
Well, I would be most pleased to have the consultant on behalf of the applicant address that as part of it.
Well, I guess my question maybe was not phrased very well, was as the Planning Director, there was a reason why we reserved this for open space?
Well, I don't know that, from a zoning perspective, it was necessarily advanced that, okay, well, we're going to maintain this as open space as a buffer between one part of the development and another. I think there are some natural features which are associated with this property, which includes ponds and so forth, and it was decided, I think, that they just wanted to keep it as an open space area, and it has been accessible and usable by the residents of the facility. That's as much as I can venture as far as why it was set aside and just kept as open space.
And then, Madam Chair, if I may, my final question is, when looking at this proposal, did we look at the impact upon the roads from increased traffic, the increase need for utilities, the increased demand for public works as we further develop? Currently, that's a, is it a two-lane roadway?
It's a three-lane road section, yeah. As a matter of fact, that's a good point. There was an attempt to reclassify a portion of this same property back in 2007, and it included also a PUD, including both commercial and office land use. One of the principal factors that went against the proposal was the condition of 29th Street, which was a two-lane, open ditch section rural roadway. And it was determined that it did not have sufficient capacity to handle the additional amount of road, customer traffic associated with this. And that's really paraphrasing it way down, but 29th Street was an issue. Now, with the reconstruction of 29th Street west of Yerish Road to Indian Hills Road, it does have the design capacity to accommodate whatever additional traffic is generated by this project. It was specifically evaluated by the Public Works Department, and Public Works does not have any reservations about this request.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to defer consideration of this for a week until we have an opportunity to talk to RDG. I know we've done things like this for decades and decades, but that was before we made a commitment to move forward with a comprehensive plan. And I think this is so significant that we need to talk to our consultant as to whether this fits in with what they want to do and what we want to do moving forward. So, that's a motion to defer for a week, Madam Chair.
If, I'm sorry, if I may just offer one additional comment. We're talking about policy when it comes to the comprehensive plan, which then in turn translates into how certain portions of Shawnee County should be used to develop. We do not have any land use policy at this point in time, nor do we have any information by which to make land use policy determinations at this point. I think that if we withhold this consideration in hopes that somehow we're going to get some magic nugget from the consultant when they haven't even done the baseline work yet, I don't know what we would necessarily get out of that. At this point, it's just a local land use decision. There are no land use policies in place. They have not even begun to craft land use policies for which, by which to make a determination whether this is viable or not viable or inappropriate or not. So, that's my only comment with regard to that.
Thank you, Barry. Yes?
I'm going to second, but it's for maybe a different reason than Commissioner Archer you've set forth, and that's, at this point, we might need RDG to advise us as to how to proceed during this period of developing a comprehensive plan. We don't operate in a vacuum. Time doesn't stop. There's still going to be needed developments. If the comprehensive plan is going to take more than a year to formulate, develop the policy, to advise the Commission, what do we do in the next year? We want to have consistency and that unpredictability. Those were the reasons why I voted for the comprehensive plan and advocated for it initially.
Neither me or I, excuse me, the program, or the consultant anticipate trying to impose over the course of this next year any form of land use moratorium. Development will continue to take place. Land use decisions will continue to be made as they have been up to this point. Obviously, things will then change with the development of the new comprehensive plan, but we're not certainly advocating to halt development in the unincorporated area until such time as the comprehensive plan is concluded and has been favorably adopted by this Commission.
And I, but, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
The reason for consultation with RDG is they are trained experts in the field of developing comprehensive plans, and I'm sure that they've encountered other governmental bodies that have gone from not having any comprehensive plan to developing their initial comprehensive plan. And we want to, again, have some of their insight as to how do we, during this transition period, how should we, as a governmental body, look at developing our metrics, guidelines? Again, there should not be a moratorium, and I would not want a moratorium on all development outside of unincorporated areas. But at the same time, we need to be able to have a consistency so that you have, as you move into, a comprehensive plan.
If I may make a suggestion, one of the first steps that's going to be taken is the formation of a steering committee. And the steering committee is intended to advise the consultant and staff on what they believe to be the issues and provide direction and feedback that way. What I might suggest is, as a future agenda item, that we put on the agenda the appointment of the steering committee, for which the county commission could identify individuals that they see as stakeholders within the county, that they think would be, you know, good for that purpose. And as a result of bringing that issue back before you for a stakeholder appointment, maybe we could have the consultant come in and also have a moment to address the Commission about the procedure for moving forward with this proposal, if you would find that to be helpful.
I would. At this time, though, everyone did make the trip. If there's anyone in favor of this, I do want to give you that opportunity. You can speak now, or it looks like maybe a week from now as well.
Or opposed.
Or, yeah, at first, those in favor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Angela Sharp with Bartlett &amp; West Engineers, representing the owner and then also Stormont Vale. And this is a project I'm very excited to bring before you. This happens to be my neighborhood where I live, and we're bringing two of our premier healthcare providers from the county together in a project together. Stormont Vale is the purchaser under contract for Lot One of the property to build a new clinic in our area. And then, obviously, Aldersgate Village is a party to it as well. They're looking to build another building on their campus on Lot Two, and then Lot Three would be open to other healthcare and related types of providers in the area. I can go ahead and address some of the questions that have come up. Number one, as far as the land use goes, as Barry indicated, there are some physical restrictions. I don't know if you're aware, but there are a series of three ponds that run along the south side of the proposed Lot Three and Lot One. And those really break the property up overall on the campus between the improved portion for Aldersgate Village and then that frontage for 29th Street, which I'm sure at the original time of the PUD, with the reason for that being retained is green space, just because it doesn't lend itself to access from a vehicular nature from the main campus up to that area. And to date, there is a walking trail, an asphalt walking trail along the north side of the ponds, and the residents at Aldersgate make great use of the ponds for walking on the trails. They're ADA accessible, and they also use the ponds for fishing and that kind of thing. So, that was, I think, the main reason for that being open space, is just that it didn't lend itself to development as a part of the main campus, aside from using it for that way. And then, as Barry mentioned also, just the depth of that property, it's only a little over 100 feet deep on most of that area. And so, really, it would only be good for individual homes if it were developed as a residential area. We wouldn't have enough depth to have any sort of cul-de-sacs or anything else. And then, the limitation of access onto 29th, we're proposing, and the Public Works Department has agreed upon two access points that would align with two of the existing streets on the north side. So, that is from an access perspective, is a more favorable arrangement from traffic perspectives. Couple of other things that I will bring up if we do move forward with it today. One of the things Barry had indicated was on Lot One, that the height limitation was 35 feet. And one thing we did discuss with the Planning Commission, that was a part of their approval, was to bump that up to 40 feet, just to make sure that we have the architectural space for the type of building that Stormont Vale is proposing, which will be very similar to the clinic that's almost open now up at 46th and Fielding Road. It will be very similar to that clinic. The other thing, there are, I don't know if you've driven past there lately, but Aldersgate is building two really nice masonry signs on either side of Asbury. And one of the restrictions that we did have in the PUD was that we had a six-foot sign height limitation. And to facilitate those existing, now there are existing, masonry signs, that would need to be bumped up to eight feet, so making that minor change. Let's see. See if there's anything else you needed to touch on. Were there other questions that?
I have a question just as far as timeline. If we set you back a week on a decision, you all have been working on this for a number of months, correct? How's that impact your timeline?
The biggest impact would be for Stormont Vale. As soon as we gain this approval, we were going to be moving forward with the design of the clinic. So, they're obviously wanting to get going as soon as possible. They're pretty excited about the project. So, I don't know that one week would be, you know, detrimental to that, but certainly anything past that would have an impact on their schedule. I think that would be the biggest impact.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed, wanting to talk on this item at this current time?
There is a motion to defer and a second. I am in support of the comprehensive plan, but I don't see any reason why we don't go forward in considering these next two. We don't have a comprehensive plan at this time. Not that we can't consult with our, with them, but when we have a comprehensive plan, those items are still going to go through the Planning Commission. They're still going to come to the county commission. We will have a different set of guidelines maybe to look at things, but I don't see any reason why we don't go forward in considering this. But I will call for a vote, and those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? I will not vote in favor of this, but we will defer until, let's see, ready to flip that calendar? This is second, so it would be the ninth, be May 9th that we would consider this.
Next item, please, Barry.
Number two, consider approval of resolution number 2016-35, authorizing a conditional use permit for Michael and Lisa Steinert to establish a reception conference and assembly facility on property currently zoned residential reserve district and located at 1636 Southeast 85th Street in Williamsport Township.
Barry Beagles, Shawnee County Planning Department. Michael and Lisa Steinert are seeking a conditional use permit to establish a reception conference and assembly facility for property located at 1636 Southeast 85th Street and presently zoned RA1 Rural Agricultural District. The five-acre site is currently part of 106 acres that is owned by the Steinerts that extends north of 85th Street. And the remainder of the 101 acres separate from the subject property encompasses the five-acre site both to the north, east, as well as to the west. The five-acre parcel is presently utilized by the Steinerts as a wine production building in conjunction with their existing agritourism business, which is under the name of Glaciers Edge Winery and Vineyard. The initial structure, winery building, was constructed in 2012 and accommodated 2,400 square feet. It included 600 square feet that was set aside for retail sales and wine tasting. In 2015, a 2,000-square-foot addition was constructed on the front end of the building to provide for expanded wine tasting area. So, that brought it to the building's current size of 4,400 square feet. The facility currently operates three days a week, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The applicant seeks a conditional use permit, as indicated, to utilize the existing building as a reception conference and assembly facility in addition to its use for wine production. The intent is to create a high-quality, upscale venue that can accommodate up to 153 people and be open five days a week, Wednesday through Sunday. The facility will only be available by prearranged lease, lease contract or agreement for weddings, corporate retreats, birthday parties, et cetera, and otherwise would not be open to the general public. In addition to its new use as a reception conference and assembly facility, the existing parking area in front of the building would be expanded from 11 spaces, as it is today, to 70 spaces in conjunction with the assembly facility. This request appeared before the Planning Commission for Public Hearing on April 11th and was unanimously recommended for approval. There were a few individuals who did. individuals who did appear in opposition to the proposal, and their concerns namely centered around increased traffic on Eighty-Fifth Street and the condition of those roads, since they are not hard-surfaced, and the dust that would be generated by the additional traffic associated with the facility. By way of background, the proposed facility, reception conference and assembly facility is, again, an extension of the applicant's existing agritourism business. Up to twenty-six hundred square feet of the existing building would be utilized for the assembly function. And again, maximum mocketant load would be restricted to one hundred and fifty-three individuals. The subject property, as indicated, is bounded on three sides by the applicant's own land, and there is a substantial tree line that buffers the site to the north as well as to the east. And that will provide some tampering, or tampering of onsite activities, if you will, with respect to neighboring properties. Given the rural character of this area and spatial separation between the subject property and that of adjoining properties, the planning commission concluded that the operation of both indoor and outdoor activities would not have a detrimental effect on the use and enjoyment of nearby residential properties. And thus, they gave their recommendation of approval on a six-o vote. I will note that within the fourteen-day period following the planning commission public hearing, a protest petition was filed. There were five properties that did, if I can, there were five properties that are outlined in red that did, one, two, three, four, five, six, excuse me, six properties that did file protest petitions in opposition to this proposal. The extent of protest amounts to thirty-nine percent of the required one thousand-foot notification area. And since it exceeds twenty percent, which is a threshold set by state statute, it's going to require a unanimous vote of the county commission to approve. So I will conclude my comments.
Thank you, Barry. Are there questions for Mr. Vigel at this time?
Madam Chair, if I could just...
Yes?
Barry, the, just as a side note, the one hundred and fifty-three people, I know in reading through the reports, that seemed like a very odd number, peculiar number, but I noticed that in the report, they're actually, that's designated by the Shawnee Heights Fire District.
That is correct.
And so, how does that process go about? I mean, how does, do we consult with them? Do we defer to them? How do they set the number of people?
Well, the resolution, which is before you, indicates that the Shawnee Heights Fire District has to complete their assessment of building and life safety factors. And their final assessment before commencement of use has to be submitted to us. And so we have, they will have to implement each of the restrictions as set forward by the Shawnee Heights Fire District. On a regular basis, when it comes to occupancy of the building, we have no mechanism by which to verify that with each event that is being held on the property, that there are no more than one hundred and fifty-three individuals present. It's regrettable, but unfortunately, the only way that we can monitor that is through the neighborhood. If they suspect that there is an event which is taking place, which is larger than what is prescribed by the resolution, then that becomes a complaint. We investigate and verify whether in fact that there's any truth to the matter. But that's a...
And so the one hundred and fifty-three people I note is, the original six hundred square foot tasting room is twenty-nine people. And then the two thousand square foot addition adds for additional one hundred and twenty-four.
Yes, sir.
And that's where we get the number of one hundred and fifty-three.
Yes.
And then, Madam Chair, I mean, the protest, it seems to be a consistency with the concern being in traffic, which would be on Eighty-Fifth Street, the noise, dust, and crime, or concern with crime in the neighborhood. Did the planning commission take up those items or have any discussion regarding those items?
Well, the individuals who spoke before in the planning commission basically indicated that, as it relates to the existing operation, that there really was no concern with regard to that. It was with the expanded use of the building and the additional traffic that would be generated, that the concern of dust was the principal issue that was raised. As far as factors of crime or anything like that, that was not raised at the planning commission meeting. So that's a new issue that was incorporated with the protest petition. But primarily, dust was the principal factor that was raised.
And what discussion was had as to the dust?
Well, the planning commission, you know, recognized that living in the country, especially on gravel roadways, dust was a regular factor of life within the unincorporated area. It was not anticipated that every event that would be hosted would be maxed out at one hundred and fifty-three individuals. That it would be, you know, on average, it would be up and down. So the planning commission, I want to say, even though recognized the fact that dust may be a localized issue, did not think that that was a significant issue by which to defeat the requested conditional use permit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Are there further comments, questions?
I was just going to ask, Barry, do you think that input from RDG would be appropriate in this situation?
I will defer to the county commission.
I'll make a motion to defer for a week and have some opinion from RDG on how this will fit in with their view of what our comprehensive plan is going to look like. And that's a motion.
Some motion to defer for one week. Is there a second?
Again, noting that this is going to require a unanimous decision by the commission. And if Commissioner Archer, you have concerns that may sway you from voting for this, I will second the motion to defer, just so that, again, all questions can be answered. And so that, again, noting that it does require a unanimous decision of the commission.
And Commissioner Cook, I appreciate that. I have struggled with this issue in reading what the neighborhood thinks and the problems they have with it. On the other hand, I've talked to the county councilor about the golden rules, and that we act as a quasi-judicial body here in making this decision. So I think it would help to have more information from our planning consultant. And so I appreciate your seconding that motion, Commissioner Cook.
I still want to, at this time, give the opportunity for people who have traveled here today, those in favor to come up and make your comments first, and then those opposed. Some of you may not be able to come next week, so I still want to give you that opportunity. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Mike Steinert, and my wife, Lisa, we own this facility. We started producing wine in 2013. And the demand for having a space for enough individuals to come out and enjoy was very high. So we decided that we needed to expand our tasting room because we could only fit fifteen or twenty people in our current existing space. And it gets hot, and windy, and it gets cold. And so, in order to accommodate enough people, we have an outside facility that people can sit in. But again, that is uncomfortable sometimes. So that's why we built on what we built on. And as much as the dust issue is concerned, we live on the north side of that road, and the predominant wind is from the south. And so, the dust that's generated gets blown onto our property. The roads that are there have been constructed, obviously, by engineers. And while they are not blacktop roads, support the use of those roads by automobiles. The argument that we would have five days a week, a hundred and fifty people out there is not a reasonable argument. We would have, we personally would limit that, even though we're allowed a hundred and fifty-three folks, I don't want to have a hundred and fifty-three people elbow to elbow. My understanding is that that number was, come up with, based on a formula on square footage. And so, as such, I know that folks just don't like being in a crowded facility. And so we would keep that under a hundred and twenty-five people, a hundred and thirty people maximum. And we are upstanding individuals within this community. I have a reputation in the educational community. I teach at Washburn Royal High School. I'm the science department chair there. My wife's a physical therapist. We don't do things that go against who we are. So the whole dust argument and having too many people out and having constant stream of people coming in and out of our facility is not a viable argument, in our opinion. And as much as anything else that's thrown out there that may smudge our reputation, that's nothing more than material that's being thrown, hoping something will stick. We are willing to provide and want to provide a nice, upscale, quiet, respectable facility that will enhance Kansas tourism, enhance the Kansas agricultural product, bring tax money into this county and into this state. And I think that we can do that with a level of class and respect for the neighbors that live in our area, as well as our property. So what else could I answer for you folks?
I don't have any questions at this time, for sure.
Just a, thank you, Mike and Lisa, for coming. You can understand the neighbor's point of view. I mean, they want to live in a rural area, and you're bringing a business to that rural area. So I think you can understand their concerns. Is that correct?
Well, we understand, we understand the concerns. However, as Kansas is a south-wind state, we are the one that's going to be impacted by that the most. And in that one-mile stretch that exists between Adams and California that is gravel, we are the ones that are being impacted the most. And the vast majority of our traffic comes from Topeka and the Eighty-Fifth intersection. So if we're able to live with the dust, then, and if it's an issue, a point of contention, we will put down dust abatement, hygroscopic material to keep the dust down. However, the last time we did that, and we did do that out of pocket, we were chastised for putting stuff down that would rust cars. And so, at this point, there's, I don't know what other argument would be, other than, well, I just don't know what the other arguments would be. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here this morning. Anyone else in favor?
I don't have a plans to speak. I'm Patricia Drake. I actually live at eighty-six twenty-three Southeast California Avenue, which is around the corner. I think we're just right outside their little tract that you guys sent letters to. So I didn't hear about this till last night. I drive past there every day. I own a liquor store here in Topeka. And I drive past every day. I drive past in the morning, sometimes late afternoon, sometimes early evening, sometimes late evening. Never have I seen any problems. I've been working with Williamsport Township on the gravel issue and the dust issue, which, I will say, after it rained this last time, because we always got a lot of flooding, they've been working on those roads the best I've seen them. So they're working on that dust issue. They really are working hard. When Mike and Lisa put down that chemical, it didn't have any dust at all. But, and during that time, when they had an event at the winery, it seems like someone across the street would burn their hay. So, you know, with the south winds, it'd come right over to their property, and that was kind of, I think, cruel. But with the location of the winery and the location, like Mike said, most traffic comes from Topeka Boulevard down Eighty-Fifth Street. So really, the houses that are complaining were not even in that area. The one right across the street, there's no way that people from that winery can be driving that fast, come out and ruin, make a lot of dust and things because the driveway across the street is very close, within a few feet of the winery on the south. And I've come home when people were coming from the winery, I've never experienced a problem. The beer and the wine, the beer and the whiskey bottles that you see on the roads are not from the winery people. They don't sell beer and whiskey. They don't make beer and whiskey. But from the youth that come through there and other residents that come through there, that don't want to get caught with this alcohol, so they pitch it out on the way, we picked up a lot. And, you know, it's a shame that that exists. But we are in the country. There is dust. And I'd like to have less dust, but, you know. But when cars are coming from the other direction, they cannot be going that fast to stir up a lot of dust because they have to turn into the winery. And nothing on the other end of the house is so, you know, I'm all in favor of it. And like I say, I'm sorry that I didn't get a hold of it earlier, but I've been real busy. But I don't see any reason that they, everything is done very tasteful. It's a beautiful facility. If you haven't been out there, you know, I wish you'd go and experience it and see just the expertise that Mike and Lisa put into this, the hard sweat and tears, and a lot of their time. And this is their dream of the world. So, you know, it makes a great place for families to get together.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in favor?
Good morning. My name is Jerry Tobis. I live at eighty-six hundred Southeast Adams, which is on the south side of Eighty-Fifth Street, just a couple hundred feet off the road. Not once have I had a problem with dust on my residence because of this, I believe. Anybody that's going to go out to the winery is usually not from the area, so they're pretty cautious. They stop at the stop signs and drive slow because they're not used to those roads, which aren't great. I think there's more of a problem with locals not using the stop signs and what have you. Also, the treatment on the road that Mike put down really worked well. I don't know if it rusts our vehicles. I don't really care. I'll take the treatment on the roads. Being from this community and from this area, there's a great need for these types of places. If you ever had to book a wedding or a party or anything like that, I think you know what it's like to try to find a place, especially when you don't need a great big facility. So I think there's a need for this type of venue. And, you know, this is a school teacher and a physical therapist following their dreams. And I think it's great for the community, and it's a great place to meet, and they're great people to talk to. And just like I said, being from the area and on the south side of the road, I'm all for it. And I just wanted to make that a note, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else in favor? Anyone here that is opposed can speak at this time?
I'm Richard Barn Grover. I am clerk of Williamsport Township. Everything sounds good and well, except Eighty-Fifth Street is one of the worst roads we have got in all of Williamsport Township. And it's very hard to maintain. And I'm not going to deny the dust or any such thing. But with the added traffic, who's going to pay for maintaining the roads? I have offered to Mr. Archer to give him Eighty-Fifth Street so he could blacktop it. But Mr. Archer told me that the county didn't have the money. And I said that makes two of us. Neither one of us got the money. So, like I said, and if you, and we have considered it, because Eighty-Fifth runs from Topeka Boulevard, Adams, California, to Barretson. And we're looking at probably at least a million dollars, of which we don't have, to pick that road up so there wouldn't be any dust. And so, I know he said in the last comment out north that he paid ten thousand dollars in taxes on, I guess it'd be alcohol, I don't know. But what I want to see is, when are we going to get some money for Williamsport Township out of this, to maintain the roads? And then I'm going to say this, and maybe it's, they don't like the sounds of it. I've been on the Williamsport Township now for almost a year and a half. And at the last meeting, Mr. Steinert made the comment that the meeting needed communication. And I agree. And I have not missed a meeting for the last year and a half, and yet he has never come to any of our township meetings, of which I informed him, meet the third Wednesday of each and every month at seventy-seven at Seventy-seventh and South Topeka at six o'clock. And I invited him to come. And so, if he wants communication, he should start with us. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed? Anyone else opposed? Okay. Thank you for being here this morning. Um...
Madam Chair, before we vote on the, or take up the motion to defer, I do have, uh, two questions for our planning director that may factor into the deferral. Barry, we had adopted a special event regulation, um, a couple of years ago. How does this operation factor in with our special events?
Special event is for temporary, short-time uses and activities which may only occur twice a year. This is a regular venue for which a special authorization is required for it.
Okay. And so presently, if the Steinerts wanted to have a wine festival at their facility, they could do so with a special event permit?
Well, yeah.
Outside?
Yeah. Currently today, uh, the, the winery and vineyard constitutes an agriculturally exempted use. And so, it becomes a question as to, I don't know, maybe this would be a question that I could defer to Rich to, to help split the hairs on it. But basically, under the agricultural exemption, there are certain latitudes that they, they could have in conjunction with their existing operation.
And then the, the second question I had, and maybe as you look, if we do defer this until next week, agritourism, winery growth is not unique just to Shawnee County. This isn't the first time it's come up. Miami County, south of Kansas City, of which, that's my, growing up in that area, wineries have sprouted up in rural areas, along dirt roads, gravel roads. And so, um, maybe if we can look at what the impact has been in other counties as to maybe looking at how this would impact Shawnee County, and if they've had the problems that the neighbors have concerns with, or have not had any of the problems, we could look to other counties that have already encountered this type of growth of agritourism to see if there are any issues that they might be able to give this guidance to. Again, we consult with a, uh, RDG to look at our comprehensive plan, but we could also consult with other counties to see how they've dealt with similar problems. Not a problem, but developments.
Any further questions?
I think that's all, Commissioner.
Barry, in the absence of a comprehensive plan, has the Planning Commission had any conversation in stopping business for the next year? Is, is...
No, no, that's never entered into the discussion at all. You know, we, we realize that we're stepping into a new venture.
Right.
Um, for which there, we have a complete absence of land use policy within the unincorporated area. Now, as we get closer to the actual adoption, there may be some questions, especially if, in the implementation of the new plan, it may be that we would have to incorporate or draft new zoning and subdivision regulations to actually achieve what is recommended in the plan. There may be some discussion, but then we will be in direct conversation with, uh, Mr. Eckert and his office through that process. But at this point, no, we're not anticipating through the development of the comprehensive plan over the course of next, uh, year, that it's going to have any deterrent effect on consideration of development proposals.
But right now, we still have in place guidelines that we refer to and the Planning Commission considers.
Yes.
And then when they forward this information to us, then it's, it's, it's again then up to us, uh, to consider all the, what is it, golden factors and all that sort of thing. That won't change when we have a comprehensive plan.
No, no, not at all. It'll just give us extra guidelines.
It will give us extra guidelines.
It's actually one of the golden factors, is how it relates to the comprehensive plan.
I, I guess, um, again, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm going to vote, not vote for the deferral. We can't limit businesses for the next year coming into Shawnee County. If, if it were a large-scale industry and we needed to consult with RDG, I, I can see that. Large-scale environmental impacts, that sort of thing. These are two relatively small impacts to our county. And again, um, waiting a, a full year, if that's the intent of this commission, I think is, is, is not a good decision.
Well, this became a point of discussion specifically related to the comprehensive plan when Mars came to.
Exactly.
And there was an initial proposal to rezone over four thousand acres from rural residential, rural agricultural to industrial land use. And we had no guidance, no land use policy at all by which to consider that. And at that time, numerous comments were made was, well, where is the county's plan, of which the making this decision? We would have not invested here. We would not build our home, had we known that this was the future planned area for industrial expansion. So, um, you know, that would have been a more significant event for which
Right.
the comprehensive plan would have been a tremendous, uh, tool and value to us.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
But I, I don't know that I have any, it is not my intent to defer any planning for the next year, or development for the next year. I'm just asking for a guidance of a week to have RDG weigh in on, as we go through the comprehensive plan, how should this commission look at approval of new permits, new planning, new development? If I was a landowner and I saw a comprehensive plan coming down the pike, that might impact how, or restrict my ability to change from agricultural to residential, I would try to get it zoned immediately to residential, plaid it, be grandfathered in. And I anticipate that we will probably have some people that try to guess ahead of this commission as to what the impact of the comprehensive plan will be. And I think it would be good to have some guidance from RDG. As those come to us, what are we going to do? If we have things that change right before the, uh, comprehensive plan takes effect, are we going to grandfather those in? Are we going to go back then and say that they should be denied? And again, we're entering into a new era and a new territory for this county. And that's not bad. It's just, we need some guidance.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, say Commissioner Cook's exactly right. We're not stopping, uh, development in Shawnee County for a year, but deferring for one week to get RDGs input, I think is a smart thing to do. I mean, we're going to be partnering with them to develop a comprehensive plan. So, as we move forward, we need, I think, as sign- and these are significant projects. Uh, as significant projects come up, we need to talk to RDG and, uh, move forward as, as a county. Thank you, Commissioner Cook.
All those in favor for the, for the deferral for one week, um, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries two to one. Commissioner Buehler dissenting. So, we will take up both of these items on May ninth. Next item, please.
Item C, emergency management, number one. Consider authorization and execution of contract C-137, two thousand sixteen with Middleton Associates International to develop a Shawnee County Emergency Operations Plans ESF-10, Oil and Hazardous Materials Response, and to coordinate and provide orientation training for all agencies involved in the plan at a cost of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Mark Commissioners, Dust and Nichols, Emergency Management. In front of you is the contract, um, for, uh, development of a hazardous materials plan for Shawnee County that coordinates directly with our emergency operations plan, just as granted or approved last year at the state. So, this would, um, take a look at that through, uh, the LAPC and the Tier Two reporting, um, and develop the response for all hazards.
Ties it all together, correct? I'll move approval of the contract.
Second.
Second. Second by Commissioner Archer. Questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Beston.
Item D, County Counselor, number one. Consider approval of claim in an amount of four thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and nine cents by William Southard for damage caused by sewer backup.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jonathan Razan, Assistant County Counselor. As you can see, there is a recommendation to pay the claim. Um, there was three factors at work here. We had heavy rain, a power outage at the pump station, and then somehow, nobody knows how, storm water got into the sanitary system. And that's, those three things combined to cause the problem. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Recommendation is to pay the claim.
Yes.
Correct. Further questions? Or motion?
Motion to, uh, pay the claim.
Motion by Commissioner Cook.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item E, Commission, number one. Acknowledge receipt of Mark Reed's resignation as Silverlake Township Treasurer effective August first, two thousand sixteen, and consider appointment of Dennis O'Brien as recommended by the Silverlake Township Board to fill the vacancy.
Is there anyone from Silverlake Township in the audience today? This has all been corresponded through the clerk's office, and I believe it's our action now at this time. I'll, I'll move approval of the receipt of, and the recommended action. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Buehler, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Administrative Communications, number one. Recognition of upcoming major community events for the month of May.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Osborne. Sorry, Parks and Recreation. Um, we have a list of stuff, uh, that takes place in May, not just events, but some of our amenities that basically will open to the public and stuff. Um, first item that we have is touch a truck. And that'll take place May fifth at Bladesdale Family Aquatic Center at Gage Park from ten to eleven-thirty. This is a big item that is good with the small kids and different things like that. They don't always get to get, uh, by. I mean, parents usually saying, uh, "Back off, don't touch the truck." Well, this time they actually get to come and touch the truck. Um, Lake Shawnee Marina opens up. We actually open up on weekends only, uh, until we get to Memorial Day weekend. And this year, right now, tenders will be, all we have is paddle boats. We are not going to have the kayaks or canoes out there like we have, because in the future, we're looking to have a plan together to put the marina and the Lake Shawnee Swim Beach kind of together. So, um, we do have the preschool track meet, which is a huge hit, out at, uh, May eleventh at Shawnee North Community Center. And that'll take place from six to eight P.M. Uh, preschools get, preschoolers will participate in running, jumping, throwing events. This event is for three to five-year-olds and have not, and have not attended kindergarten. Select, select three events for, from the following: thirty-yard dash, fifty-yard dash, soccer kick, ball throw, and running broad jump. Pre-registration is required. Um, we do start in May, in the middle, May eighteenth, we have our Gage Park Concert Series at the Ampli Theater, which is a big success. Family Fitness Great Race, May twenty-first at Hillcrest Community Center. Race starts at one P.M. Families spend quality time together and get fit. In this race around the city, ages ten-plus, and it's fifty dollars per family for that event. The Gage Park Mini Training Carousel opened for the summer season. Uh, we did have some corrections on that. Basically, Monday through Sunday, we will open up noon to seven. And then Friday, we will actually, uh, we'll, we'll open up at noon and go to seven forty-five on Friday evening. So, we're just making a little bit of a change to that. And then, what everybody's been anticipating, uh, because it's not been warm, we have the pools and aquatic centers that will, uh, open up on May twenty-eighth, which is Garfield Pool, Hillcrest Pool, Oakland Pool, Rossville Pool, Bladesdale Family Aquatic Center, and Shawnee North Family Aquatic Center. The Midwest Health Aquatic Center is coming soon. We don't have a definite date for sure yet. Lake Shawnee Swim Beach, Samuel Jackson Spray Park, and Dornwood Park, and Dornwood Spray Park is coming soon as well. And then, basically, every parent's dream, starts May thirty-first, we have our summer youth camps that begin. So, that way they can drop their kids off at the camp and head to work and not have to worry about. So, if you have any questions, I'd be willing to have to answer them.
Covered it all. Thank you.
Okay. That's every grandparent's dream also.
Anyone, um, other administrative communications?
Good morning, Commissioners. Larry Mall, Shawnee County Treasurer. It's May second. And this is my first reminder of it, or a series of reminders on May tenth, your second half. Tax payment is due one more week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners, do you have anything?
We were able to attend the Combat Air Museum Pancake on Saturday. All three commissioners were there, attendance. Uh, I knew it was a very well-attended event.
Definitely.
Um, it was good to see all of the different action, uh, activities there, including the fundraiser for the Ronald McDonald House, um, and also good for the news media. I might also note that I think the county counselor had some issue with the, uh, agenda scheduled for Parks and Rec, um, the limiting the preschools track meet to those under three or over three. I think that, you know, his youngest is already able to run the fifty-yard dash and, you know.
Only a two in the morning.
Only a two in the morning. So, but no, it's, it's good to see that we're already planning for our summer activities. And I know that even with the cold weather, the kids are looking open to the pool.
Exactly. Thank you. Commissioner Archer?
Yeah, the pancake, uh, it was, it was a, a good event. And, uh, I realized I could flip pancake and cook sausages at the same time. So, I was kind of ambidextrous. But it was a good event. It was for a good cause. And there were just hundreds and hundreds of people that came there. And so, I want to thank everybody that, that participated and came and practiced. So, that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I, I too will say thank you to the Combat Air Museum. Um, everyone down there is always welcoming. And they always invite us back every year, even though we may not, you know, flip the pancakes all that great or whatever. But it's, it's so fun to join the other, um, the other servers, uh, you know, Washburn University students there, um, coaches there, um, other elected officials. I know Larry was there as well. Um, so, uh, always, always a good event. And we wish them continued luck in, in, uh, keeping that important museum open. So, um, I don't have anything else, but we, next item.
Executive sessions?
And as part of our executive session, we will be performing department head evaluations from ten o'clock until twelve-thirty today. We, uh, and it does say noon on the agenda, and I know Jane has noticed, uh, that we will be in session until twelve-thirty. So, uh, I will, I guess, make that motion to, um, go into executive session and, and at twelve-thirty, no later than twelve-thirty. For a second?
A second.
Non-elected personnel?
Non-elected personnel. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we go into executive session, uh, just to consult with our county counselor, I know that we're planning on having some department head evaluations also on Thursday morning.
We are.
At eight-thirty before, it's eight?
Eight o'clock.
On the sixteenth, sorry, yeah, sixteen.
I'm beginning at eight o'clock, yeah.
Okay. And I just didn't, okay, making sure that as we get to that appropriate time when we make the motion before the meeting.
Right, exactly. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Jane. I got off.
Rich, rip that.
Did we do it during the evening?
Why not? Yeah, just rip it off. Why not? Yeah, just rip it off.